Started. I am so excited. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome to everyone. Full house, standing room only. This is awesome. We have students here from Oakville Elementary School and they are going to sign the Pledge of Allegiance. This is really cool. If everyone could please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That was very neat. Thank you guys very much. Okay, now I would like to do a roll call. Scott Hugrich.
Present.
Jeff Woolman.
Present.
Tori Belkey.
Here.
Patrick McKelvey.
Present.
Jean Preto.
Here.
Grace Wright.
Here.
And I'm Peggy Hassler. If I could please get a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion, motion carries. I think it delayed. Motion carries seven zero. Okay, if you all didn't figure it out, we have somebody calling in for the meeting. All right, next, I would like to tell everyone that there are 10 Melville School District citizens that are candidates for four positions on the Melville Board of Education. There is information about each candidate on our website and the election is April 2nd. So for further election information, including polling locations and sample ballots, you can go to the St. Louis County Board of Elections. The candidates are listed, I'm going to read the candidates by term in order of filing. So for the two-year term, Peggy Hassler, that's me, Jean Preto, Mike Moore, Shasha Smithkins, Bob Mahatchek, Venky Palaman. For the three-year term, Patrick McKelvey, Amy Summers, Tori Belkey, and Jim Semikaitis. Okay, that was my laundry list. So now, I would like to recognize our staff and students. So first up is Beerbomb Elementary, Dr. Paul Morris and Nathan Perkins.
Good evening, Melville Board of Education. My name is Nathan Perkins. I'm the Assistant Principal over at Beerbomb Elementary. Tonight, we're here to celebrate and recognize our Beerbomb Peer Mentoring Group. All my friends are up already. Come on up. If you haven't come on up. Well, this is an ongoing program at Beerbomb Elementary that was started at our building a little over four years ago, and it includes student leaders from both fourth and fifth grade. These students partner with kindergarten through second-grade students to support them academically and socially, building positive school skills that will support them through their whole time at Beerbomb. During our peer mentoring process, students meet weekly with their mentors and it is really rewarding to see the growth that happens. Beerbomb Peer Mentors, thank you for all that you do and for playing such a vital role in our school. We are so proud of you.
Okay, next is Oakville Elementary, Dr. Megan Ochoa.
Hi, I'm Megan Ochoa, and tonight I'd like to recognize the 20 student members of Oakville Elementary Sign Language Club. The second through fifth grade students are learning to sign language, excuse me, students are learning sign language phrases that can help them interact with students who may communicate differently. These students are an excellent representation of OES theme, celebrating individuality and valuing the strength of community. Tonight, I'd like to invite Ms. Hannah Beck's up just to say a few words about why she chose to participate in our Sign Language Club.
I joined Sign Language Club to learn how to talk to other kids that can't hear. I will show you a phrase. Hi, my name is H-A-N-H.
Thank you, Hannah. I am so proud. I am so proud of this group's dedication to inclusivity and your eagerness to interact with classmates who utilize varying forms of communication. Thank you to Mrs. Sarah Hecht for sponsoring our club, and please join me in honoring the Sign Language Club for exemplifying high levels of respect and empathy for others. I'm so proud of you guys.
Okay, next, we have the Melville NEA Awards, given by Bridget Kelly.
Good evening. My name is Bridget Kelly and I'm here on behalf of Deana McKelvey, President of Melville NEA, to present our Two Students of the Month, one for Beerbomb and one for Oakville Elementary. So I will actually introduce Julie Feit to present Beerbomb's student, Joey Russell. Come on up, Joey.
This is Joey Russell, Joseph Russell, Joey, from Beerbomb, second grade. Joey has been working very hard to follow the rules and expectations of second grade. He advocates for himself by checking in with adults and making sure that he is making good decisions, such as moving himself away of distractions as needed. Joey has been working hard to use his time wisely and to stay focused on his work. I'm so proud of the changes that he has made on his own so that he can be the best second grader that he can be.
All right, next up is Lily Wisahan. Come on up, Lillian. Is anybody from Oakville Elementary here to present? Her teacher? Okay, Lillian? Guess it's me. Here's your award. Oh, perfect. Here is someone to talk about Lillian.
It is with great pleasure and pride that I stand before you to speak on behalf of a remarkable young individual receiving an award today. Lillian, an outstanding fourth grader, represents the very essence of integrity, poise, active listening, feedback acceptance, and a growth mindset. From the very beginning, Lily has exemplified unwavering integrity. Her honesty, fairness, and respect for others shines through. Whether it's participating in a collaborative assignment or demonstrating kindness on the playground, Lily's integrity is a guiding light for her peers. Her commitment to knowing, her commitment to learning knows no bounds. She's always the first to raise her hand and the last to give up on a challenge. Lily's kindness radiates throughout her actions as she extends a helping hand to anyone in need without hesitation. Lily's communication skills goes beyond her active listening and sets her apart. She listens with intent, shows empathy and understanding towards her classmates and teachers. In a world filled with distractions, Lily's attentive ear is a rare and valuable gift. One of Lily's most admirable qualities is her openness to feedback. She not only welcomes constructive criticism, but embraces it as an opportunity for growth. Lily understands that feedback is not a critique of her character, but a pathway to improvement, and she navigates this path with grace and humility. Finally, Lillian embraces a true growth mindset. She faces challenges with resilience, sees failures as opportunities to learn, and consistently strives to better herself. Lily's determination and willingness to push beyond her comfort zone inspire those around her to do the same. Lily is not just a student receiving an award today. She is a role model, a leader, and a beacon of light in our school community. Let us all take a page from Lily's book and strive to embody the same integrity, poise, active listening, feedback acceptance, and growth mindset in our own lives. Congratulations, Lily, on this well-deserved recognition. Your future is as bright as your spirit, and we cannot wait to see where your journey takes you. Thank you.
Okay, next, I would like to, number one, thank the Oakville High School Leadership Class for all these wonderful, solid school boards.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
And they asked us what we liked, and so family and I liked too, and all, and so they made cups that are individually decorated, very cool, and all this wonderful stuff. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Go ahead, sorry.
Hello, Board members. It's that time of year where all the students in the Melville School District come together to say thank you for all you do, because this is Board Member Appreciation Week and Month. On behalf of OHS Leadership and all the students in Melville School District, we want to say thank you for all that you do.
Everyone in our district is extremely appreciative of all the hard work that all of you put in year-round to ensure everything runs smoothly across the district. Your unwavering commitment to the success of our staff and students does not go unnoticed. Your strong leadership and decision-making is shown in your support of our district's teachers. Backing and supporting them has raised the standard for our schools' district lead.
Beyond your decision-making, you have engaged our community and helped foster a sense of collaboration and unity. The community especially thanks you.
Thank you for volunteering countless hours to serve on this board and help make the Melville School District the best it can possibly be.
Again, thank you so much for all that you do. Your exceptional service and leadership makes a positive difference in the lives of us students. We are extremely appreciative and grateful to have a Board of Education that cares as much as all of you do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That is very thoughtful. We appreciate it.
Let's do it. We haven't had a group photo in a while.
Okay, now we're moving on to open period for patron comments, and we do not have anybody signed up for agenda-related items. So we will move to student achievement, and I have Beerbomb Elementary School with Dr. Paul Maris, Morris, I'm so sorry, and Nathan Perkins.
All right. Good evening, Board of Education. I'm Paul Morris, the Principal at Beerbomb Elementary School. I appreciate the opportunity tonight to tell you all the exciting things that are happening at Beerbomb. I want to begin just with a couple of points of pride. So I'm one of those people that I watch these board meetings month after month, and I've gotten to see my colleagues talk about the work that's been happening in their buildings around professional learning communities. One thing I'm particularly proud of, at Beerbomb, we really started this work, I would say, about three years ago, and that was kind of coming out of COVID. We recognized that we needed to kind of ground ourselves, and having worked in another district where we did a lot with PLCs, I was excited to kind of bring this work to Beerbomb. The three big ideas behind PLCs are just making sure that we're hyper-focused on learning and that we create a collaborative culture for learning, because one thing I told my staff at the beginning of this year, when we think about all the unique needs that our kids have, and no one of us has all the tools we need to be able to meet those needs, and so collectively, though, we are greater than the sum of our parts. And then the last big idea as part of that PLC work is a focus on results. So our grade-level teams spend countless hours, usually beyond what I expect of them, reviewing data and planning lessons that meet the unique needs of our kids. And when those grade levels meet, they really focus on the four critical questions of PLCs, and sometimes it sounds like an oversimplification, but when you think about the work that we do, it really comes down to these four key points. What do we want kids to know? How are we going to know that they learned it? How will we respond when they don't learn it? And what are we going to do for those kids that might already know it? Another point of pride I wanted to talk about was just our place in the community. I listed, I brainstormed a list up there, and even after I sent this off for publication, I was thinking, man, there's a whole lot more I could have added to this group. We have so many people that come into our building on a pretty semi-regular basis and just remark how, about how welcoming the culture at Beerbomb is. The picture that I put up there is one of our classrooms visiting the Bookmobile that comes and visits us. And now, prior to this year, the Bookmobile would visit us once a month, and this year, because of construction, we had to consolidate our library collection down to about a fifth of what it normally is, and our librarian reached out to the St. Louis County Library to see if maybe they would increase the frequency of their visits, just knowing that our library collection was going to be limited. And she was initially told, nah, we don't do that. But when the folks that actually drive the Bookmobile and are at Beerbomb on a monthly basis found out that we had made that request, they called their bosses and said, yeah, we need to do that. And then, once the school year started, I had a chance to go out and visit the Bookmobile, and I was talking to one of the librarians, and she said, of all the schools that they visit, Beerbomb is their favorite one to come to. And she specifically remarked about how kind our kids are and how helpful our staff is when our kids are visiting the Bookmobile. And that's just one anecdote. I could tell probably 100 stories like that one. Another point of pride for us is our improved attendance, this year in particular. So prior to the pandemic, our ADA was hovered around 94, 95% like a lot of schools. COVID kind of affected that number for a number of years. Last year, we kind of bottomed out, but our, Mr. Perkins and our school counselors have really spearheaded efforts to create a more systematic approach to outreach to our families. We've had a number of We've had a number of meetings with families just to emphasize the importance of good attendance, and so our ADA last year was around 90%. I pulled that number the other day, and now we're back into about mid-93, so we're getting closer to those pre-COVID numbers. So, a lot of work has gone into that, and we are seeing the results for sure. Talking a little bit about our student demographics, we are a very big school. We have, this number is no longer accurate, because since I wrote this, we've had another enrollment. We're up to 531. Half of those students are multi-language learners, and about half of those are free and reduced lunch students. We also have about 13% that receive special education services. And I also put this number up there, because I do think it's important to note that we've got those three big subgroups, and 74% of our kids fall into at least one of those. So, you know, that, those, that particular, those numbers sometimes lead to challenges, but I'm really proud of the work that our teachers have done to meet the needs of all of those different groups. And another point of pride, every year I come up here and I talk about our number of languages, every year that number goes up. At our last check, we think we're at about 32. What's gotten trickier is, as we learn more about our kids, we're finding that in addition to languages, there's also different dialects within these languages. So, sometimes that number gets trickier and trickier to track, but we are proud of the diversity we have at Beerbomb. I kind of refer to it as the place where the world comes together. Talking about our workforce, in addition to having all those kids, we also have a very large staff. Nearly all of those teachers hold a degree beyond a master's. This was a piece, I did a little research in preparation for this presentation, that I wasn't quite fully aware of. So, if you look at that first chart up there, that pie is divided into, so there's two big chunks there. That blue chunk, the big blue chunk, that, those are teachers that have 20-plus years experience. That middle chunk are teachers that have 11 to 20, and then those smaller chunks are all just different numbers between 1 and 10 years. So, we have a very balanced staff in terms of just the experience that they bring to the table, and it has been really cool, I think, this year to see, if you look at our grade-level teams, our grade-level teams reflect that different experience, too. And I would say, this is probably, I would say, the, going back to that PLC work, our teams are firing on all cylinders, and I think a big part of that is just all those different levels of experience that make up those grade-level teams. When we shift to our academic data, so what I have on the screen here, so these are our final iReady scores for the last three years, and in the board notes, I also provided our breakdown for all of our benchmarking periods for the last three years. I focused on our final diagnostic, because that's ultimately what we're trying to get our kids to, is that proficiency. What's not captured here, though, is the amount of growth that we're seeing in our kids from year to year, in particular. So, for math, going back to 2021, about 35% of our kids met their annual growth target. This past year, that number went up to 56%. So, each year, we are seeing more and more students hit those specific growth targets. I was a little disappointed when our final numbers for last year came back, and they were very similar to the year prior, but after speaking with our math director, I'm starting to kind of understand just how, how much we kind of had to dig out of the hole we were in following COVID. If you look at our reading scores, again, those final numbers for reading continue to go up. I also just want to highlight the growth there as well. So, going back to 2021, 39% of our students hit that one-year's growth target. This past year, that number was up to 56%. And we do feel like if we continue to get our kids to hit that growth target, or those individual growth targets, we're going to start to see the number of kids that finish the year at proficient start to get higher and higher. Just wanted to quickly go over our building improvement goals. That first goal there is about proficiency in these skills that our grade-level teams or our professional learning community determined were to be essential for those students. And I wanted to take a moment just to talk about why we worded our goal like that. So, over the last couple of years, our teachers have done a tremendous amount of work to really just understand what their learning standards are at each grade level. We call that unpacking our standards, and through that collaboration, we have found more continuity in our understanding of those standards, just exactly what the state is asking of our students. We've also come up with more formative, common formative ways of assessing students to ensure that we all have a common understanding of what proficiency is for each of those standards. The second goal up there, I talk about a safe learning environment for our students. That goes right back to our work around Prop S. Because of that work, we've been able to improve the security entrance at the front of our building. If you recall, prior to that work, coming into Beerbomb was tricky. Now, some of you joined us last week for our facilities committee meeting, and you can see all of our secretaries now have a clear line of sight to all of those folks that are entering. And we've also just created what I didn't expect to happen, but now that that work is done, is our kids and our teachers take a tremendous amount of pride in what that, what that work has done. We've created new learning spaces that we're able to use. The next goal up there, I talked to about earlier, that's increasing our attendance. We're proud of the work that's been done there. And then finally, just working to create that sense of belonging, because we know all of our teachers, all of our students, they learn their best when they're at a place where they know they belong and they're loved. So, we've been excited to see that work continue, and I also shared in the board notes just how that percentage continues to increase year after year. Looking ahead at what's next for Beerbomb, so we were really excited about Phase 1, and anytime somebody comes over and they see what was done with that office, and they look at just the improvements that were made, they're always blown away, but what I always tell them is, as cool as that is, what's happening on the backend with our library, with our new classrooms, with our art room and our music room, what's happening back there when all of that work is done, hopefully, next February, that's going to blow the front end out of the water. So, I'm looking forward. I know some of you came over last week. I'm looking forward to seeing you all again when that work is done. Also, looking ahead to what's next, again, I talked about that PLC work at Beerbomb. One thing that has been on my radar since we began that work, and I really think we are in a position to really seriously start considering it, I'd like to put a team together this summer to begin the work for it, is I'd like for us to submit an application to be a model PLC school. And I listed the criteria that is, that you need to check in order to receive that designation, and I think that, I think we've checked all of those boxes, so I am excited to possibly look at taking the next step for our PLC work. And in closing, I want to say thank you to the Board of Education, but I also want to make sure to thank all of the folks on the screen right now. That's our staff. They work incredibly hard, and I know we are one day away from spring break. It is going to be a very well-deserved break for those folks, so thank you to the Board of Education, but also thank you, thank you, thank you to my incredibly hard-working staff. That's all I've got.
And thank you, and Mr. Perkins, and definitely your staff, because without you, obviously, we wouldn't be seeing all these great strides you're making. So, amazing stuff. As you mentioned, I want to mention it so that the public understands, all the, we've asked lots of questions, they are all on eboards, and lots more information, more than you could ever dream of. So, good job on your daily attendance. That's exciting, and we know that's a nationwide problem, so thank you.
Thank you.
One more thing really quick. I know you only got to highlight so much in your board report. Tori, Peggy, and I attend a P-day, and it's become one of my favorite things that I've seen in the district every year, and I know you can only highlight so much, but one of the motivations for getting re-elected is so that we can go again together, because it truly is one of my favorite events in the district.
We are excited that, that will continue. Uh-oh. Maybe it won't, I don't know. No, it will continue. So, one of our other hard-working staff members who retired last year, Mr. Gitsa, she was kind of, she spearheaded that work, so this is going to be the first year that we're going in alone on that. So, I expect it to look a little different this year, but be looking for more information on that. We know that'll be sometime in May.
I heard George Zico would probably volunteer if you asked her.
She 100% would.
Thank you. Okay. Next up is Oakville Elementary, Dr. Ochoa.
My name is Megan Ochoa, and this is my third year at Oakville Elementary School, and although my job is to support and serve the students and staff and families of Oakville Elementary, you can tell that that relationship is reciprocal by all of the orange shirts back there and the students and staff. So, thank you guys for being here to support me. When I started at Oakville Elementary School, I had the opportunity to talk with each individual staff and ask them, what makes Oakville Elementary special to you? And the resounding answer always came back to the community. In fact, one of my staff members said, Oakville Elementary is like a small-town school that they picked up and then dropped right in the middle of a bustling, busy suburb, and now that I'm there, that sentiment still remains very true. Our community is at the heart of everything that we do. Our family is that foundation. We have a strong PTO that supports academic achievement and that sense of belonging. Currently, our PTO is planning for the Eid celebration that is going to celebrate the different cultures in our school. They also promote that academic achievement and by encouraging student voice. So, we have soccer goals, because students have written persuasive essays for those soccer goals. We have basketball goals, because students have written persuasive essays for those basketball goals. So, we have a lot going on, and our PTO certainly supports us. We also support community events, so fill up the pickup truck. And then I wanted to speak a little bit about local partnerships that we have. I myself love Oberweis, and if you go in there, you'll notice that we have student artwork at Oberweis, so I always get a kick out of seeing that. We also partner, obviously, with our St. Louis County Police Department. On the screen, you'll see Officer Mike, who is a beloved member of our OES family. He, you could see him in the mornings, making sure our walking families get to school safely. He works collaboratively with me to plan for drills. He's there when they happen, and then he provides feedback to make sure that all our families are safe. And then, a fun fact about Officer Mike, he also comes over once a week and does a bad dad joke of the day, so if you're there for that, that's entertaining, but they've gotten so bad that our students are now writing jokes for him. We also have our service learning. We have an ambassadors club that does a lot with that. They've recently supported a family of a former OES student that passed away, but they are constantly supporting everybody in the community. And then, as Paul mentioned, at Beerbomb, we're doing a lot of work with PLCs, and you'll hear that come up throughout the presentation, but that collaborative problem-solving is so important, and teachers and staff knowing each other not only as teachers and staff, but as people comes first, and so that's kind of highlights some of our community. Also, if you look beneath the headline here, I challenged our leadership team last year to come up with a new school mission, so a mission that would guide the work that we do every single day. The challenge was making it concise enough that we can remember it and really stick to it, and make sure that it is guiding everything that we do. So, they came up with Oakville Lions Engage in Learning for Success. And so, we've been focused a lot on that engagement piece in the classroom, so we've been talking about cooperative learning, we've been talking about STEM projects, having that hands-on kinesthetic learning, but we know that learning takes place outside of the classroom, too, and we want to really highlight the students' talents, the natural talents, and those interests that they have. And so, we have so many opportunities at Oakville Elementary for students who might be interested in science. We have that robotics club. We have a science club, which last year, all the members of won Blue Ribbon Awards. If you're into the fine arts, we have choir and strings and art club. We have activities for students such as Tremont Chess Club. So, I joke and say, we have an opportunity for everyone, until Victoria, one of my fifth grade students, says, we actually don't have drama club. And so, I said, well, Victoria, we don't have a sponsor for drama club, and I'm kind of out of money to sponsor drama club. And so, next thing you know, she writes another persuasive essay, they're very good at those, to Ms. Ginny Best in our community ed department, and low and behold, we had our first drama club yesterday with 40 students attending, so our students can be very persuasive. So, who are our OES staff? If you can see these charts here, what's interesting to me is that most of our staff has 10 years-plus experience in education. What's even more interesting is, most of our staff has 10-plus years of education at Oakville Elementary School. So, when we ask why they stay at Oakville Elementary School, it's because of that community piece, feeling supported by their peers and by the families and students we serve. Going back to that mission, Oakville Lions Engage in Learning for Success, you can see that our staff are also participate in that lifelong learning. Most of our staff have achieved a degree higher than their bachelor's, with lots of them with multiple masters. We actually had one staff member that earned their doctorate degree just this year, a couple weeks ago. We have three staff members currently in higher ed courses, and we know that the only learning for adults doesn't take place in colleges, so our staff participates in a lot of professional development. We always have room to grow, and so we have three staff members in letters training, learning about that science of reading. We have five staff attending the Added Up Conference, which is during the summer, so they're giving up their summers to be better educators and learn more. And we have two staff members piloting, yes, two staff members piloting the new ELA curriculum. We've been really excited to see how piloting that new curriculum and that new resource has made huge gains in those classrooms for their reading achievement. When we talk about the student enrollment and who we serve, we currently serve 392 unique individuals, but if we break down, we have about 50% female and about 50% male. We do have 22 students that access the Gifted and Talented Program here, Stretch. We also have 77 students that have families that speak another language at home, and so they are serviced by our ELD teacher and that program. We also work collaboratively with our SSD staff and department to make sure that all students have what they need to achieve at high levels. So, when we talk about achieving at high levels, there are a lot of ways to measure that, and we do that in a lot of ways in the school building. But today, I'm going to share with you some of our iReady math benchmark data. That is the data that is used, as you've heard from all of the principals, at the elementary level to measure that. So, you can see here that over the past three years, we are kind of having the same trend. So, from every semester, from fall, winter to spring, our students are showing, we have more students achieving at grade level each semester, and we have fewer students in need of those higher interventions. One thing Mr. Dr. Morris also talked about was that growth data, so our goal is not only that students are all achieving at grade level, but also that they are achieving a year's growth. So, if they come in not at grade level, either below or above grade level, how are we making sure that they're still achieving a full year's growth or more? And so, I'm happy to say that we also are making a lot of progress in this area, so in our first couple of years, it was in the 20th, 30th percentile achieving that year's growth, and we have made huge gains now in the 50th and 60th, both in math and reading, so it's really great to see that. You'll see the kind of same trends with iReady reading. Again, from fall, winter to spring, we're seeing that students are achieving more, and that is a direct correlation to the work that the teachers are doing in the classroom. And we know that through that PLC process. So, if we talk to teachers, how do we know that the students are learning? We use those formative assessments to make sure that they are on track. We're learning about about all of those standards. We're talking about what does it mean to be proficient? And we see that that work is really helping our achievement rise to high levels, higher levels. So these are our school improvement goals. You'll notice that the first two are directly correlated to that data that I just shared with you. So again, we're not only wanting everyone to be reading and performing mathematically on grade level, but we're wanting to make sure that every student is achieving that year's worth of growth. So we're working, like I said, in PLCs and looking at all of that data to make sure those goals are met. That third bullet talks about our staff, teachers, and students' sense of belonging. We know that students and staff and anyone needs to feel valued and safe before they can achieve at high levels. And so we want to make sure that our staff and students feel loved, feel appreciated, feel valued, and know that they belong at OES. And through that panorama data, we've seen that our student and staff are in the 90th and 80th percentile nationally normed. And then finally, that last bullet, the percentage of students meeting 90% attendance will increase from the 22 to 23 school year. We know, again, like Dr. Morris had mentioned, that attendance is important. We see an opportunity through our APR to gain a point from attendance. And so we've made that a goal. But more importantly, we just know that in order for our instruction to be valuable, we have to have our students in the classrooms. And so we've been working to put some interventions in place to hopefully increase that. So great things to come at Oakville Elementary. Again, just focusing on that PLC model. You know, we know through researchers such as John Hattie that collective efficacy is the number-one indicator of student achievement. And what that means for educators is that they believe that what they are doing is of value and is impacting achievement. So whether that's impacting it positively or negatively, it's important to look at that data and make those decisions to learn from each other. One thing I would like to highlight is we are growing that. For example, our wonderful art teacher, Mr. Adams, recently came to me and said, can I please join the grade-level PLCs instead of going to the art PLC today? And I said, explain? And he said, well, you know, I heard that we're really focused on geometry standards, and I've been hearing that teachers need some support with that. And I feel that geometry is in total alignment with the projects and work that we're doing in art class. And I would like to hear what those standards are, what the vocabulary is, and support classroom teachers in their efforts. And so he's been joining those. So we are just growing that so that all staff, whether it be classroom teachers, specialists, support staff can be a part of that process. We also have additional teachers that have requested to attend the Solution Tree PLC Conference this summer. So we hope that they get to go and learn more. We have the vertical alignment. So kindergarten teachers are talking to first-grade teachers, first-grade teachers are talking to second, and they're really comparing those standards to say, what are you teaching in kindergarten, and how does that relate to what I'm doing in first grade, all the way up to fifth grade? And so we can kind of see those progression of standards. And then finally, you know, I will say that, just like my teachers model that lifelong learning, I believe it's my mission and important for me to also model that and model that collaboration that I expect of my teachers and students. And so building a collaboration with the other administrators in the district, for example, with the attendance at Oakville Elementary School, that isn't something that we've been focused on quite a bit. So being in collaboration with buildings like Beerbomb, who have been focusing on it for a while and seeing positive results, learning from our colleagues, so making sure that we're doing that. And then, like I said, that common collective efficacy is at the heart of what we are doing and where I see us going. So I'd like to conclude tonight by saying thank you. Thank you to the Board of Education for all of your support. Thank you to my staff that are here and all of our staff that support us. And happy Board of Education Week. They like to see me turn red.
So thank you. Again, you have all kinds of great information and answers to our questions on eBoards. So thank you for your leadership, and we love seeing the growth. And thank you to the staff back there and all the other Dr. Ochoas that I met the other night.
If you weren't at OES Trivia, you were missing out.
So at their trivia night, they had a whole table dressed as Dr. Ochoa.
Different versions of Dr. Ochoa.
It was cute. Anyway, but congratulations. We love seeing the success that you and your leadership.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, next up is Prop S update with Stephen Wendell.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Steve Wendell, and I'm the Melville Construction Manager. And I'll be updating you on Prop S tonight. We will show our completed slide. We're not adding anything. Last month, we added Melville and John Kerry for their security entrances. And we will hope to be coming soon with some better news at Point. But we'll go through the projects now. Beerbomb Elementary Phase 2, as Dr. Morris talked about earlier, and I know many of you were at the facilities committee meeting and saw some of the work firsthand. We are progressing at the back. It is, it's a large undertaking. We're in the middle of pouring a number of different sequences of the foundation walls, and we'll still be on that, you know, for the next probably four to six weeks or so. And then we'll move on to getting some structural steel going and even going up higher a little bit with the building. Point Elementary, we did pick up some work over the last month here. We did get our casework delivered for the office and the teacher's workroom, et cetera. And then even since I took the photo, we have gotten the countertops installed. So we're getting very close to, by the end of this month, we're going to hopefully take a punch list, walk on that teacher's lounge, some of the restrooms in the hallway that are new. And then still on plan is the fire-rated storefront for the office is due in April, and then we'll be able to move into that space as well a little bit later. Starting soon, we've got a number of projects that we've talked about already at previous board meetings that are going to basically start construction for summer construction this summer. We've got Woolwind and Oakville Middle, Berkeley, Beasley, and Fordor. We've, let's see, we've got, we've actually got permits on all five of these now. I see it says in process, but we do have that for Berkeley and Beasley and Fordor now. In fact, we've actually started a little bit of demo at Fordor. So I hope to be able to take some pictures for next month and start showing some of the progress. The other four of those five really won't begin until we're into the summer months. As I think somebody asked a question on eBoards, and we talked about getting started and also completing, these are the five that also have the fire-rated storefront glass. So we're really working on getting all of that stuff on order right now so that we get it in time for completion. Other upcoming projects, next month, we anticipate coming to the board meeting with the approval request for Mosaic Elementary's security entrance and office. And then Troutwine, Washington will be following. I think the bidding, what we're going to try to do with Troutwine and Washington is maybe bid them at the same time. So we'll probably land in June or July so that we can bid those concurrently and see if we can get some construction savings on bidding them at the same time. And then Mosaic Elementary Phase 2, which is the ADA scope, will still be next winter bidding for the following summer construction. And then our finances update, and then I'll pause if there's any other questions other than the ones on eBoards. Okay, right. Have a good evening. Happy Board of Education Week.
Thank you. Okay. Next is Budget Development, Marshall Crutcher.
Good evening, Board of Education. I'm Marshall Crutcher. I'm the Chief Financial Officer. I'm presenting on the budget development tonight, focusing on revenues. So if you have been able to look at any of the data on eBoards, basically, I'm just going to pretty much focus on the very first page. And the footnotes down in the bottom half will really tell you a lot of the key data, rather than getting, you know, into the weeds tonight and going really deep. So over 85% of all of our revenue really comes from five different revenue streams. It's the local tax, basic formula, sales tax, early childhood, and transportation. Overall, our revenue as presented would increase about $2.7 million or 1.6% from the current year. If this was June 30th, this would be the revenue schedules that would be presented for the final budget. So we'll go forward and tweak things as any changes occur. But as of right now, this is what revenues would look like. Footnote 2 talks a little bit about the local tax assumptions. Basically, we're estimating taxes going up about nine-tenths of a percent, and that's primarily due to personal property taxes that are not restricted by the Hancock Amendment. This is a non-reassessment year, so the real estate portion really should not be going up, other than the new construction piece. Tax rate would be similar to what it was this current year. That would continue to be around the 18th, ranking 18th among the 22 St. Louis County districts. The CPI inflation index is, should be around 3.4%, but that won't really come into play since it's a non-reassessment year. And the collection rate is budgeted at 97.13%, which compares to, the last three-year average is 97.11%, and the last 10-year average is 97.14%. So you can see it's a very consistent collection percentage that we tend to realize. Then finally, on the taxes is, the budget estimate for this coming year would be that one cent is equal to about $257,000 of revenue. And I guess the final note that's important is, since this is an even-numbered calendar year, when we get to September on the tax rate hearing, if there are any voluntary rollbacks, that would not be able to be reversed until the next even-numbered calendar year of 2026. So you cannot reverse that in 2025. Moving on to the basic formula, when you're looking at the detailed schedules, really, the formula is all about looking at the most optimal WADA year that you can choose from. We've been, for several years, operating in some COVID exception-type years, meaning that under this current year, fiscal year '24, we're able to choose from more than just the three traditional years. So we can actually go back to fiscal year '20 and use the fiscal year '20 WADA, which happens to be, I think, 96-36. Starting in next year, fiscal year '25, we no longer have those COVID exceptions. So what that means is, we go back to the normal, just the normal rules that we had before COVID, where you choose from either the current year, fiscal year '25, or the prior year, fiscal year '24, or the second prior year, fiscal year '23. Actual fiscal year '23 WADA is 95-20. And we're estimating at this point fiscal year '24 WADA to maybe come in around 96-92. And that's just really based on looking at the September and the January attendance counts compared to this last year. They're up about 3.2%, but I'm budgeting 2% instead of 3.2% just to be conservative. If we really are up 3.2%, that would be another $775,000 of revenue on top of what I'm budgeting so far. So we're sort of guessing at what fiscal year '24 is. We know fiscal year '23, but we think fiscal year '24 is going to be more, so that would be the number we will want to use. So that's really the key points on driving the formula revenue. And then the sales tax, we're currently at a reimbursement rate of $1,374 per WADA, and Desi is projecting $1,513 per WADA next year, so that's the basis of that revenue. So those are really the highlights that's in our revenue budget as presented. And with that, I'll ask if anybody has any questions.
Okay. Next is Strategic Plan, Access and Opportunity, Adam Smith.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Adam Smith. I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, and tonight I'm presenting the update for the Strategic Plan for Access and Opportunity. So some essential elements, big topics in the theme is, as you heard from Doctors Morris and Ochoa tonight, they talked about their school reports, which is kind of an embedded part that goes into this particular topic in the Strategic Plan. We also are talking about increases in access to those curricular and extracurriculars, having an excellent workforce for our students to learn from and also for our employees to work with, just engagement and the supportive services, the continuous development of professional learning for our staff around our student needs and supporting those to the best of abilities, as well as increasing that awareness and that growth, and also the success we've had with the Missouri Sealed by Literacy, and then also just overall looking at practices and professional learning. When we look at just those school report pieces, every month, the school principals give reports specifically around things at their schools. I asked Dr. Dewali to give me some information, so I'll give him credit here. And I have percentages as well as just raw numbers. But right now, we have around 18% to 19% of students at the high schools have enrollment in an advanced placement course. When we look at just numbers, we have 35 students that are enrolled in STL caps. And when we also look at our CTE, our Career and Technical Education courses, we have 1,902 participants, which John relayed that that is a student that has completed a CTE course. And then we have also 765 students that are a concentrator, which means they've completed two sequential crediting courses in a CTO program. So I think that's a real huge success for our students. Also, we have 41 dual-credit opportunities within our school district, as well as 15 advanced placement options available to students. When we look at those clubs and activities to date, I asked some friends in HR to run me some reports. And so across the high schools, from August to the end of the year, we have over 80 clubs and activities available to students at Oakville and Melville. When we looked at across the four middle schools, we have 138 different clubs, activities, extracurricular opportunities for students, as well as at our elementary level, we have 186. So there's a lot of things besides school that students have the opportunity to participate in and be a part of in our school district. When we look at that retaining and attracting that really diversified workforce, we want our students to have positive role models that are good for them and that are really the essence of our community. So HR does a great job of job fairs. We, of course, seen the success and appreciate the passing of Proposition E. Hunter, as well as the comms team, has done a fantastic job with my Melville stories. Also, a lot of success with former graduates of our district in the Alumni Hall of Fame recognitions we do. We also have a lot of people that are actually doing work that are students or former students in our district. So the supporting in the IT department, those support system interns that we have, we're also working through that Grow Your Own process. And then during the summer and also during the school year, there are student employment opportunities, whether that be inventorying or working over at the auditorium as sound tech crew. And then the Retention and Recruitment Committee, that team has met seven times. I don't want to completely steal Dr. Pike's thunder, because I know she has a future board presentation report in the coming months. But just some highlights of the work that's happened over those seven meetings is, the group's really looking at mentorship program action steps, as well as feedback and data action steps, recruitment and hiring plans, and classified staff support. So those are just some glimpses of what's to come, and I know Dr. Pike will share more out at a future meeting. When we look at just that engagement and supportive services for our students that they have access to, we are doing the twice-a-year special emotional learning survey. Pending results are coming probably right after spring break from the most recent spring survey. It's a small incremental trend, but you can see over time, when we just look at that ADA cap snapshot, there is a small increase. Dr. Morris indicated he's had a pretty significant Principals also always talk about just the systems of support that they have for their students and their student populations when they do the reports, which is always amazing. And we're always looking for those increased partnerships with any children's service fund agencies that we have partnerships with through that tax. When we look at continued professional learning and support, a lot of these are some things I already talked about in the fall, but some things that are also coming up, last month I talked about the Elevate Summer Conference coming up in June, and then also just with the support and, and the efforts of Doctors Bresler and DeKemper. There's always pieces around what's happening with our students, how we support our students when they are doing their instructional leadership meetings monthly, and that collaborative process through the principal central office, as well as curriculum team directors' work that's happening monthly around students and student supports. When we looked at the SEAL by Literacy, this is one area that I have on my goal sheet to take care of before the end of the year, is I'm going to work with elementary and middle school principals to work on getting together a group to be that committee to, we'll look at what that could look like at the elementary and middle school level to award students when they are completing fifth grade and eighth grade on having some semblance of a SEAL. But as you can see over time, we were kind of one of the, one of the first districts besides St. Louis Public in 1920 to kind of take this on and actually do the application with DESI. We started out with 15 students in that year earning a SEAL, and then this most recent graduate year from Oakville and Melville, we have 38 students last June that earned a SEAL. And so that's pretty amazing, and that's something that's continuing to increase and be a really point, a real point of pride for our school district. So it's really exciting stuff. When we look at just responsive practices, we are always looking at ways to, you know, really support that portrait for graduate, really looking at things to really support those things we believe in. We have that student dataset from our Panorama Survey around all of those topics. But one thing that I didn't notice necessarily highlight last time is, we do have the high school senior spotlights that the Communications Department and our high schools really promote as kids are graduating from their senior year. We have a lot of Melville mentions that really go into that recognition and just that acknowledgement of the things that are happening that are responsive in our district. And then also, our district Communications Team does an excellent job, as well as the school teams, just around that social media pres, presence and that inclusivity of our community and all the communications that happen in our school district. So just a lot of awesome things happening that really supports the themes within access and opportunity for students. So with that, I'd like to thank you, and also thank you during School Board Recognition Week. Thanks for all that you do.
Okay. You may have any questions? I actually have a quick question. On the average daily attendance, do you know what the threshold is for full points with the, on the APR report or not?
I do not. I might defer to, Dr. Smith said nine.
Nine D.
Oh, nine E, sorry.
So it's the entire, so that's why every, is that, that's why the goal is always over 90?
Isn't that 90/90?
Yes, and that is correct.
90% of the kids, 90, yeah.
90% of the time, that's still the threshold, which we're trying to, sorry, I'm waiting for this mic to come on.
There we go, there we, yes, that's the threshold for it, and that's the reason why we try to include it. And so there is a difference, obviously, between the average daily attendance and then the proportional attendance. Those are two different numbers.
Okay. And we're obviously improving, so that's good. And I, I think, again, I've said this a couple times at meetings, it, it was a statewide problem on people's APR scores that everyone lost their points, so. All right, and then the, I also think it's worthwhile to mention the SEAL of by Literacy wasn't a thing prior to 2019, right?
Exactly.
I think it was just brand-new in 20, I remember it came out when my daughter was a senior, so, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Advocacy Committee update, Jeff and Jean, I guess?
Yeah, I didn't know, I was, but I, I will just, Jeff, did you, did Jeff have anything to add?
Yeah, Jeff's going to say something, I believe.
Okay.
I've got a couple of things, Jean, but why don't you go ahead and talk about the legislative breakfast that's coming up next weekend, and you can just give them what I have.
Yeah, that's all I had to add, was that we're going to have a, we're going to host three of our schools legislators here next Saturday in this very room with a light breakfast and some serious talk about what's going on in Jeff City concerning our schools. Representative Moore, Representative Burton, and Senator Beck will be here to discuss activities that are passing through the House and the Senate that will impact our schools, such as Senate Bill 727, that is moving rapidly at this point. However, they're going on break next week also, so fingers crossed. We're hoping that things probably will not move too quickly after that. They still have to tackle the budget, which is going to take quite a bit of time, so I'm hoping that that kind of gets in, in the way of some things moving along. So that's all I have, is, it should be a very interesting meeting next Saturday, so looking forward to it. That's all I got, Jeff.
Thank you, Jean. And basically, one thing to point out is, since we've made it to March 1st, we're done with bills being filed in the House and the Senate, and the amount of legislation that is filed is, I think, again, another record, because I just attended a, a meeting yesterday that MSBA was running, and the advocacy director there basically said that this is likely to be yet another year where they break records for the amount of legislation they file, as well as having the least amount of legislation they actually get completed. There is a level of division and faction fighting amongst each other on both sides of the House and the Senate that makes things getting done very difficult. And the item that Jean pointed out, Senate Bill 727, is a bill by Senator Koenig, that's trying to increase the amount of ESA, Educational Safety Account, also known as vouchers. And this bill started out as just that, and then added the ability to try and expand charter schools into Snakegills County, St. Louis County, and Boone County, Boone County being out in Columbia, Missouri. When it finally made it to being perfected, it had gone to a substitute that grew it from 15 pages to 75 pages, and after the back and forth that happened, it grew to 150 pages. It added in so many extra items that are beyond the scope of the original bill. They're trying to get these items to make it attractive, where they're trying to increase teacher pay, they're trying to increase funding for career ladder, which helps teachers grow their career. I mean, the list of things that they added is just, it was mind-boggling, and it's going through fiscal review right now to find out how much of a potential change to the budget is proposed by it. When it was originally proposed, it was talking about somewhere in the neighborhood of $600 to $900 million deficit. And this leads into the fact that also they're working on budgetary work in the House right now, and they had their initial discussions that have happened over the last few days. Right now, they're talking about the proposed initial budget in the House being a $4 billion reduction from what was put forth last year and approved by a governor. So this is likely to make things a little bit interesting, a little bit divisive, and a little bit compromising in a lot of ways trying to get this done. And getting the budget done is something they have to get done by the second to last week of the legislative session. So once they start up next session after spring break, there's going to be a lot of horse training going on, a lot of discussion going on, and trying to get things over the line and get completed. So I want to sit back with some top one and watch things happen, because it's going to be very interesting.
Okay. And I would encourage the public to pay attention and write to your senators. It does make a difference if you can link to our senators, actually, from our website, I believe, and tell them what you want, that, what you would like to see happen, especially with this bill that Jeff was just discussing and Jean, so, thank you. All right, moving on to action items by consent, A through H. Does anyone need to pull anything?
No.
Nothing? If I could please get a motion to approve action items A through H.
No, go ahead.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0. I should slow down maybe when we have people on the phone. Okay. Next is Communications, open period for patron comments. We do have someone signed up, and I am going to say your last name wrong, I'm positive. You want to say it for me? Sue?
No, I don't. Maybe Mrs. Belkey can say it.
You say it, Mrs. Belkey.
Wait, can you do it? Can you do it? Did you talk to your husband first?
I know, I'm sorry.
May, oh, that was easy. It looks much more complicated. I'm sorry.
No.
I love it.
Tell me when.
Oh. I guess talk to her.
Oh, yeah, I have to, sorry, confused me with the, all right, so as you, hold on, let me find my rules. I apologize. Okay.
Don't start my time.
Oh, I'm, so you have three minutes per person to talk to us, and I wanted to remind you that the Board is accountable to the state, protecting the legal rights of the schools, employees, students, parents, and others. Discussion of individuals, our specific situations will not be allowed. The Board will strictly enforce these rules, and speakers will be interrupted if they discuss matters that might violate Board policies and rules. So thank you.
Thank you. Ready?
Yes.
Good evening. My name's Sue Mazak. I'm an almost lifelong resident of the Melville School District. I'm also an educator, teacher, reading specialist, and currently academic interventionist at Troutwine Elementary. Go Tigers! I know that you can hear and understand me this evening, not simply because I was a 1979-1980 vice president of the Thespian Club at Oakville Senior High, and I therefore understand how to enunciate words and project my voice, but here at the high school, I know we have audio equipment that's in good working order. I also know enough about audio equipment to be considered dangerous, as I have personally given birth to a two-time Emmy Award-winning audio engineer. On February 29th, I went with my husband to Washington Middle School to watch my great niece perform the role of Bruce in the play Matilda Jr. The entire cast, from Matilda to the chorus, gave it their all. I would love for you to hear them. I even took video. Unfortunately, you can't hear them because the audio was terrible. I find it interesting that we're celebrating arts in our district this month when we can't seem to find funding for the supplies needed to support those arts in our elementary and middle school buildings. As a teacher, I understand totally the need to spend tens of thousands of dollars on curriculum. As a district taxpayer, I appreciate the fidelity to my tax dollars. However, study after study shows how important the arts are to creating well-rounded, successful humans. If we can't seem to allocate money needed in lower grades to make the arts enjoyable for students to participate in, we may lose their interest by high school, making their portrait of graduate a little less colorful and a little less complete. I ask that the Board find time to look into the elementary and middle school buildings and see if the audiovisual equipment is as up-to-date as possible. I totally understand the thousands of investment dollars it will take to make our buildings better, but I also understand how important the arts are to educating our next generation. Here, here. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got the thing.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Yeah, we appreciate that. If I can please get an authorization of closed session?
Motion enter a closed session meeting for the purpose of reading of minutes of previous meetings and corrections and approval of same or other items under Missouri Revised Statute 610.021, subsections 1 through 21, and 610.022, subsections 1 through 6, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting particular employees, section 610.0213, in individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employment or applications for employment, section 610.02113, in legal action, causes of action, or litigation, section 610.0211.
Scott?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
There we go.
Tori?
Yes.
Peggy, yes. Patrick?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Grace?
Yes.
Okay, if I could please get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries 7-0. Okay, we'll meet back for closed in about seven minutes.